Well, good evening. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM, our regular meeting session on January 10th, 2023. I know there are some people that would like to speak on a consent agenda item. If you would, please make sure that you fill out a speaker form in the back and make sure Chris Harrison on my left gets that before the conclusion of the opening meeting, before we get to special thanks and recognition. All forms of paper turned in and all speakers will be heard, but after that point, they'll be heard at the end of the meeting. But let's go ahead and stand and do the pledge of allegiance and then the kids at Hope pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our treasure hunter pledge?
As an adult and treasure hunter, I'm committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exists in all children and youth. I believe all children capable of success, no exceptions.
Please be seated. Feel like church. Well, this evening, we have Morningside Elementary School performing. This is Patrick Madden's class from the high school. They have students that go over and help teach at Morningside. They do it at Savannah Ridge and I think Mariposa, too. Am I stealing your thunder? Okay, good, good, good. I just want to make sure. And we're grateful for his class. It used to be the IB Drama Program and a lot of students have been raised in that and helps in the elementary level and teaches them a love for the arts. I want to thank Principal Blythe and also Assistant Principal Ms. Wright. Thank you for being here and parents. So let's go ahead and Ms. Lydian Martin. Great job, Morningside Elementary. Thank you so much for coming. Parents, if you're a parent of one of these young children, would you please stand so that you could be recognized? Look at all these parents and grandparents. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We're going to go ahead and turn this over to the superintendent for special thanks and recognition. The board members will probably go down the floor.
At this time, I'm going to bring our chief of communications, Ms. Lydia Martin, up for our star awards.
Thank you. Chairman Ingersoll, school board members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince, at this time, I'd like to present you with our January star recipients. The first one is Melody Golden. Is Melody here? Yay, come on up. She is the school registrar at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy and she was nominated by the Executive Secretary Myra Ayala. Melody routinely goes above and beyond for the families, all things dealing with registration. Her list of enrollments can have one or 10 names, and she will give each family the time and attention they need to complete the registration process, whether she has to contact the former school, the district office, or even family members themselves. For missing or incomplete registration, she does it all with grace and understanding. Above all, she makes every student feel at home. The students leave her office knowing that she has their best interests at heart, and this might be one of the reasons they always look to her for help. So congratulations. Next, we have Angela LaRose, Assistive Technology Assistant from Fiddler's. If you could come forward. As a Fiddler's Assistive Technology Assistant, Angie creates, prints, laminates, and cuts all of the visual supports needed for four counties. Even with covering four counties, her turnaround time is usually less than 24 hours. She is efficient, friendly, and always helpful, and all-around an amazing woman. St. Lucy Public Schools' speech-language pathologist greatly appreciate her dedication to helping St. Lucy, the SLPs, use visual supports to help their students with complex communication needs. Congratulations. Next, we have Mary Macielo, Media Clerk from Southport Middle School. She can come forward. Mary was nominated by Assistant Principal Matt Roy. She goes above and beyond daily to make sure their school maintains a positive culture by running the check-in-checkout program. She spends hours organizing and putting together point sheets for students who participate in the program, in addition to all of her normal duties. She also takes the time to organize wonderful school-wide events as chairman of the Sunshine Committee. She is an exemplar of someone going above and beyond to make sure that the students are receiving positive interventions and the staff feel valued and appreciated in a welcoming environment. Congratulations. Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, we have Andrea Jacobs, bus driver, who was nominated once again by Southport Assistant Principal Matt Roy. She in...
Is she here today?
Oh, here she is. Ms. Jacobs goes above and beyond daily to make sure the students at Southport make it home safely each day. Ms. Jacob calls the school every day after her normal route to make sure that all the students have made it home safely and offers a ride to any student who may have missed the bus. In addition, she regularly runs double routes for the school, filling in whenever and wherever she is needed. Recently, after running her normal routes, she returned to the school at 6:00 PM after her normal route to serve as a bus aide for a bus that could not leave Southport without that assistance. So thank you for all that you do and congratulations. All right, congratulations. And that concludes our special thanks and recognition awards.
We're going to go ahead and move to ESOL report. I know Mr. Freeland was not sure if he could make it. He had a previous commitment that came up. Does anyone from ESOL would like to speak on behalf? Seeing no one. CWA, is there a CWA representative here? Youth Advisory Council. Not tonight. I saw Mr. Becker here. He doesn't want to like give me an update?
Yeah.
Where is he at?
Now looking at the pilot.
Okay. I'll get him at the end of the meeting then. All right, Mr. Superintendent, I'm going to... Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Is there a move that you adopt this consent?
Second. I got a motion from Dr. Mills. I got a second from Mr. Kelly. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We do have discussion on today on Consent Agenda number eight. We're going to go ahead and pull that for a separate vote and discussion. So, Mr. Superintendent, can I have your recommendation for the consent agenda?
I vote that you approve the consent agenda as submitted with the exception of item 8.1.
Okay, board members, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second?
I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Before we go ahead and discuss the consent agenda, item RFQ 23-03, Mr. Superintendent, can you just give me some background information on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair Ingersoll. I wanted to address some concerns raised with... in this particular RFQ, and I do have some pretty extensive remarks to make publicly, and I just wanted to make sure I made those remarks publicly prior to the public speaking on these and also prior to, you know, the board having discussion about it. So, some issues have been raised, and I wanted to address some of the misconception or at least clarify some things that I've heard over the last few weeks from some of the competing vendors or from even local community members, and I wanted to speak to these matters. First of all, I wanted to address some misconceptions, and some of these are both big and small, but I still wanted to get it out there because these are the things when I've met with community members, these things are things that they're talking to me about, and I wanted to make sure that I at least publicly said something about it. The first is with regards to the community, the Fort Pierce community, and why is Fort Pierce Westwood High School not being built first? And the Triple D, which is the tradition area high school, was first on the docket, so to speak, for construction. So I want to have some clarity here. Both schools were on the docket or scheduled at approximately the same time. Fort Pierce Westwood High School was delayed due to a Castaldi Report, which I'll explain what that is momentarily. On September 29th, 2021, Mr. Marty Sanders, part of my team, presented to the board the need to rebuild Fort Pierce Westwood High School along with a projected cost. Mr. Sanders, in that same presentation, mentioned an immediate need to build a new high school in South County and shared anticipated growth and also shared high enrollment numbers in our South County high schools. The board had follow-up presentations on the new Triple D High School on February 8th, 2022, April 26th, 2022, and September 27th, 2022, while also concurrently having follow-up discussions with regards to building and rebuilding Fort Pierce Westwood High School on April 26th, 2022, and February 22nd, 2022. All of these meetings are public and available to be viewed on our district website. Current projections have the new Triple D High School opening in August of 2025, with the new Fort Pierce Westwood High School immediately following with an opening of January 2026, literally six months apart. Fort Pierce Westwood High School is only slightly delayed because the district had to wait for the state to grant us permission to rebuild the school, and that's part of the Castaldi Study. And this is only possible by doing that Castaldi Study, and that caused a short-term delay. I also have heard mention of community members as well reaffirming my commitment to rebuilding Fort Pierce Westwood High, and I can tell you that is the utmost priority to me as it was my predecessor, Mr. Gent, who was the former principal of Fort Pierce Westwood High. Also, via social media and other platforms, there's talk that, you know, all of these the construction jobs are going to a company in Texas. I wanted to clarify that real quick. The companies that bid on the school are mainly local companies partnering with larger companies from the outside. That is common in the state of Florida. Core, who came in number one, has offices in Texas and Florida. Of course, partner Remnant, I just wanted to recognize, is a local construction company based out of Fort Pierce. Wharton Smith, who came in second, has offices throughout the Southeast United States and builds schools all across the Southeast region. All of these firms have to present an inclusion plan that ensures they are using local and/or minority and/or female-owned subcontractors. That's part of the process. Why was the winner of the Triple D High School allowed to even bid on the new Fort Pierce Westwood High School RFQ? SLPs has to legally, and that's St. Lucy Public Schools, has to legally consider any vendor that wishes to bid on any project. Now, we can put processes in place to take into consideration things like volume of work moving forward, and I'm committed to bringing this before the board in the future to take into account future projects. Speaking of volume of work, most of the companies that bid on the project have work in our district totaling millions of dollars in projects and upcoming work. They will continue to do business with our district moving forward. I'm sure many of these companies that failed to get this bid are also doing millions of dollars of business in other districts across Florida. And lastly, I want to get to that, about competition. We have a process in place, and we followed it. In every RFQ process, there's only one winner. All other competing vendors, and I've heard it loud and clear, are unhappy. I want to make a few important points about this, though. All the companies that are bid, that bid, are provided with the selection criteria prior to the actual bidding. No one raised any objections then. After this process was completed, every company had an invitation to come in for feedback. Of the four companies that failed to get the bid, only two scheduled sessions for feedback and input. We would be doing a disservice to our taxpayers if we didn't award these large bids to the winning bidder. We're responsible for having a progress with integrity and getting these schools built on budget and on time. I'm committed to doing both while also acknowledging to the board that we need to consider changes in our process moving forward. Another interesting fact that I want us to consider as well is the notice of intent to award, we call this the recommendation to award, was issued on December 2nd, 2022. Firms have 72 hours to notify the district of their plans to protest the outcome. Not one firm did. No one protested. I want to reiterate that I'm confident that we have integrity in our process and we follow all state and federal guidelines and laws. I also want to say that our employees who oversee our procurement, facilities, and budget, who are part of this process, have integrity and ethics, and I believe in them and I believe in you, and I have the utmost confidence in them moving forward and appreciate their hard work that they put into this process. I do want to add that I've been out in the community. I've met with community members that I respect and open to recommending changes to address some of their concerns they address with me, and that they were brought to my attention on future large RFQs, but our process is our process, and we did everything right in our current process. Soon, we'll be putting another K-8 school out to bid, and these same vendors will have an opportunity to make their case as to why they should be awarded that contract. The district's procurement process is a transparent process. It was followed with fidelity. I believe it is in the best interest of the district to approve negotiations with the highest-ranked and best-qualified proposer, and that is my recommendation to the board. I'm bringing this recommendation forward in the spirit of transparency and with great excitement to move forward with the building of Fort Pierce Westwood High School. I respect all of the companies that are here tonight, that we do business with, and my door is always open to hear from you, or them, or any member of the public moving forward. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks on item 8.1.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this point, we do have a few speakers that would like to come forward and address the board, only on Consent Agenda, item number eight. The first one, and we've... and you're in order on how the recording secretary or executive secretary, Chris Harrison, received them. It's going to be Andrea Dampier and then Mr. Cliff Moore. So Ms. Dampier, could you please come forward, please? Please state your name for the record and your place of residency, and you'll have three minutes.
Andre Dampier. Address is 2000 North 43rd Street, Fort Pierce, Florida. Good evening. This is my granddaughter. She's a student at Fairlawn, and I'm mentoring her to run for school board member District V. Dr. Prince, we've talked. Thank you. Chairman Ingersoll, we've talked, and I talked to you in particular because to my umbling chagrin, District V North, Fort Pierce sanctioned you to be their representative in August. Good evening to the other board members. I would like to say something has gone wrong again. It has been reported to North Fort Pierce that Westwood would be built next, later, after another high school. Westwood has been next for years. I know. I spent 37 years there, and I still live close to there, and I hear the bell ring. It's an old bell. There is nothing new in Westwood after 45 years but cosmetic cover-ups. This devalues students, make it difficult to retain qualified faculty and staff, and does nothing for safety. If you tell me a public school is needed here in South County where there is exponential growth, I would say you're right. Then I will present you with a quackmire. A new school represents revitalization and hope to a community more than any other construction, right? So are... So why are you willing, really willing, to watch one community die and another community live? Come on. Is it true that there is a number-one school building company who has partnered with St. Lucy County Public School alumni returning to give bike to their community? A promise is a promise. We promised them if they return, we will work with them. And it was as simple as two companies building two schools at the same time. Who brokered this deal? During an election for in North Fort Pierce, a question came up about what is important to you as a school board member if you became one? I mentioned fiscal transparency. Mrs. Harley, you may remember saying, "We have that already." And you went on to say, "What's most important to you is that we were building Westwood High School." Because I know, Ms. Harley...
30 seconds remain.
She did not say that for convenience or political gain, but a young man scoffed in disbelief so loud, she stopped and answered, "Trust us." Okay, I heard Dr. King say this, "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor political nor popular, but he must take it because his conscience tells him it's right. Remove the systemic barriers to equity."
Thank you, Mrs. Dampier. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, board. My name is Clifford Moore. This is my mom, Barbara Moore. I am the CEO of Journey CND Group, graduate of Lincoln Park Academy, class of 1998. The potential award of this contract has drawn immense controversy, so let me start by saying what this is not about. This is not about just race. This is not about having a project in a community and not having representation from this community on the project. This is not about, respectively, about Westwood getting delivered after Triple D. That is something you have to answer to the community about. This is about the admittedly terrible and flawed process. We were scored unjustly and not accordingly to the rubric. A community member stated that... or excuse me, a committee member stated that they gave up during the presentation because they could not see our presentation. We were directed not to stand behind them, so we stood next to them, that committee member. Dr. Prince, you would not be okay if a student said they didn't complete their exam because they didn't see... they couldn't see the board. You wouldn't take that. Then why are we, as a team, being asked to be okay with it? Equitable distribution. Your team intentionally recently took the language out of it, not to penalize a firm that has been awarded work, but they left the state statute pursuant to Section 287.055 of Florida statutes noted in the RFQ Section 4, Paragraph B, sentence two states. In determining whether a firm is qualified, the agency shall consider such factors as the ability of professional personnel, recent, current, and projected workloads of the firm, and the volume of work previously awarded to each firm by the agency, with the objective of effecting an equitable distribution of contract among qualified. Lastly, the committee allowed for Core Remnant to state that, and I quote from their proposal, "Should we be awarded Westwood High School, Core Remnant will be able to reduce overhead by maximizing efficiencies between the teams. We can reduce our project fee for Westwood to 1% lower than the negotiated fee on Triple D, savings of over $800,000." This is not only an unfair advantage, but no other team had, that no other team had, but almost a quid pro quo, which is an ethics violation. Now, it would be one thing if the committee didn't consider it, but it was written in the committee notes. Now, from what I've heard, that several of you in recent conversations, that this is wrong and even shameful to award Core with over $160 million, but you will say... will you say it for the record?
30 seconds remain.
You say that you're concerned that you will be sued. Well, they're sitting right there, and I guess that it'd be a good question to ask them. Will you sue us, even though you just awarded them an $80 million project? I have spoken to my lawyer and other lawyers, and your RFP has written perfectly that you can't get sued by them, and if so, there's not a judge in here that will uphold it. You are choosing not to do the right thing because you are afraid, yet I'm afraid of being blacklisted, but I am willing to stand and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next will be Mike Jaclyn and John Garneth. Next will be Mike Jaclyn and John Garneth. So... All right, Mr. Jaclyn, you'll be first. Oh, John wants to be first. Yeah, you can submit. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is John Garneth. I'm president and CEO of Proctor Construction Company. We were one of the presenters on Triple D and on Westwood. We did not win either one. Obviously, the reason I'm here is the process. I think if you would have had three schools that day, Core Remnant would have got all three schools on those three, if you did three presentations. And the reason I say that is because the team that reviewed, and this is a human nature thing, it's not staff didn't do anything wrong, Core Remnant didn't do anything wrong, but guess what? They were the one chosen on the first job. The same selection committee reviewed them on the second job. So they picked them on the first, they liked them, they did a great job. They saw them again on the second, they picked them, they liked them, they gave them the job. If you would have done K-8 two weeks later, I would say that Core Remnant would get that job also. So if that, if that's fair, then you don't have a problem with the system. But I think it's human nature. I would recommend that you look at the system and say, "Wait a minute. We've got to have diversity. We've got to have..." You had five great contractors that came in and presented, right? So you chose the same one on both jobs. And in my opinion, you would have done it on three jobs. You didn't, but so that's speculation. So I think the process, and nobody did anything wrong. Nobody did anything wrong, except I think it would be better served for the community that if you changed up the selection group a little bit. You know, or if someone wants to compete for another job, you penalize the competing contractor that just was awarded. And we're not, and we're not talking $4 million, $5 million, we're talking 60, 70, 80, 90, $100 million jobs, all going to the same contractor. So I think it was a human nature thing. That's honestly what I think. So I think it can be fixed. I don't think anybody broke any rules doing what they did, but I just think, I think that some things were overlooked with respect to that. So obviously, we want to be a part of it. We've been doing business with the school district for over 20 years.
Thirty seconds remain.
And obviously, I'd love you to pull it and relook at it, but, you know, those are my comments, and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jaclyn?
Michael Jaclyn, for the record. Pull the mic up here a little bit. I let Politically Correct go first, and I guess I'm the opposite of that, so I'll let you have it. I appreciate you allowing me to speak today. Dr. Prince made some points that going forward, there should be some opportunities to take a look at the process, right? I'm of the opinion that you're not a warning it to the right company. So I want to go on the record and just say that. You know, we're number three. I think the second-place team should be awarded that. I want to go right on the record, say that if you had previous processes in place, that score would have come out differently. And we, you know, it's not the time to go through that, but I'm just telling you that the points doubled from Triple D to Westwood, and every scoring criteria, and if that previously awarded work would have been in there, you would have a different outcome of what's being proposed to you tonight. Just to make very clear about that, number one. Number two, you have a mid-year move-in. You know, Dr. Prince alluded to that in his speech. Has anybody here worked in that arena to realize what a mid-year move-in means? They're somewhat difficult, right? Let's just face it. I'm asking you not to take the foot off the gas. We all want to see Westwood happen. I'm a proud graduate, but what I'm saying is, take your foot off the gas for a minute. Let's see where Triple D lands. Because you're making a decision tonight, potentially, and you don't even know what the outcome of that is yet. And now you're already doing it a second time. So what's the rush? Right? I mean, I understand, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but what's the rush? What are we, what are we in a hurry to do right now? Worst case is, it'll just go to the following school year, right? You're only missing a few months on the new school, and I know that that's anguish for a lot of people, but at the end of the day, is that really the end of the world to get this right? Right? The goal is to do it for the children, right? And I understand that, you know, I have children here, we all have children, we all have skin in the game. I just want it to be done right. And again, I'm not here for me, right? I'm here for these guys and the process and making sure we do it right. So I ask tonight, again, please, just table it. You don't have to take action on it tonight. That's all I ask. And let's give it a bit of time, and let's see how some other things vet out, and then you can always bring it back and slap it right back on the table, approve it, and move it along. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jaclyn. Last speaker of the night on this agenda item is going to be Mr. Johnson, Mr. Kim Johnson.
First of all, good evening, everyone. So I don't envy your position because I've been in your position as an elected official. And sometimes you have to make tough decisions. You know, I kind of got pulled in an opportunity to be a part of this project. As a matter of fact, Derek, one of your employees, I got a chance to speak with him once he got hired on to St. Lucie County Public Schools. And was trying to, first of all, I congratulated him. Secondly, I wanted to try to support him in his effort of getting to know people in the community, and really trying to connect him with small businessmen and women, some of the minorities in the community that does contracted services that could be beneficial and useful for the St. Lucie County Public School system. He and I talked about me potentially doing some consulting for St. Lucie Public Schools. He said, "Let's talk about it in the coming year." And between that time that we made that statement, we actually was in a position, oh, I'm sorry, I was in a position, I got called by one of the companies to support them and be a part of their team. And that was the company that came in second place. I want to thank Dr. Prince for addressing some of the things that were concerns. But I also want to say this. The challenge is always doing what's in the best interest of the community, following protocol, following processes. You know, one of the things that I think about when I think about this whole situation, and it may not be something that was done by purpose, but if you are negotiating, I'm sorry, if you are negotiating in negotiations, if you're not careful, that could be seen as an unfair advantage, because that person is talking numbers, and they have some inside information that the other team may not have. So when you're talking about something like that, you definitely want to take another look at that situation and say, "Is it fair to the other companies who are bidding?" Also, when you think about this whole process, I look at it from this standpoint. What team is inclusive enough to provide services that's going to equip locals to be a part of this project on a consistent basis?
Thirty seconds remain.
With employees as well as staff members. Why is that important to me? Because I ran for office off of those specifics, having people come back to the community, having people come back from college to work in the community, having people come back and say, "There's no place like home, like Dorothy Clicking and Hears and Shoes," and coming back. So if we're going to do that, let's put a process in place, equitable distribution that will allow multiple companies, and then you'd allow for...
That's time. That's three minutes. Thank you.
The members of the community who are a part of the community to have a chance at bettering and building their own community.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. At this moment, that has concluded all our scheduled speakers for this consent agenda item. Mr. Superintendent, can I have your recommendation?
One caveat before I make the recommendation, because there was, you know, whenever you hear something, you want to make sure that the public has the right information. And I'm going to look at my team over here, Mr. O'Leary, our chief operating officer, for a thumbs up or thumbs down, because I believe there were two different selection teams on these projects, okay? So to one of the speakers' points, it was not an identical selection team. That was deliberate on our part, that we had two different selection teams, and I wanted to make sure the board had accurate information on that. With that being said, I would recommend the board approve item 8.1 as submitted.
Board members, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Harley.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Discussion. Mrs. Richardson. Go ahead, go ahead. You shake your head.
No, I said, yes, I think we need, this is something that we should discuss.
Okay.
So there are so many things here. For me, it's a matter of, I want to use the word equity. I just cannot wrap my mind around one company being awarded the project, a job, for two high schools. If we have five companies, we have five companies bidding for the job, I just feel that even though there is the rubric and everything else that goes into this, I too was under the impression that we had, it was the same people doing the, so thank you for that.
The review committee. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so thank you for that. But I think that at some point, even the superintendent mentioned that, you know, we have to look at the process. We have to look at how we are doing this, how we are scoring whatever it is, and we need to make some changes, because I just, I just can't see this. I cannot see giving one this to one company. I'm done for right now.
Okay, yes. So if you don't mind, let's go ahead and hold our pluses so that we can hear the board members speak. Mr. Kelly, you have any discussion on this matter? No. Any other board member?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It is very important to me that there's fairness in the process. And I have heard from our superintendent, I have heard from community members, I have heard from other businesses, construction companies that apply, including what I've heard tonight, and I appreciate all of you that spoke up. I think it's important that if you do feel like a process is unfair, that you're able to speak up, and we're able to hear the opinions of many. And so I thank you for coming and for speaking on this issue. I'm bothered that what I've heard, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this equity distribution was taken out previously. Please clarify that. It was taken out before this process? I want to know more about that. Why was it taken out?
Just looking, and this is from this board's perspective, because I'd rather hear their, my viewpoint on this. It was the RFQ on Triple D and the RFQ on Westwood, it was not in both of them. It's in the continuing contract of equity, if I'm correct. So when, Ms. Albrighton, am I right? So when I started looking at the background information of the statute, I did notice that it was omitted in both RFQs. So it wasn't in one and not in the other, it was not in both of them, which brings us to the question, why was it not in both of them? And that's part of the process that we need to address. But that was part of the process before everyone submitted.
Why was it omitted? Is the question.
And to, and I'll allow Mr. O'Leary if I say anything that is inaccurate, but in the processes, our processes are reviewed after the fact every time, and that was some of the feedback we'd received from other vendors with regards to that specific issue moving forward. So it was taken out of that most recent RFQ, per feedback from the vendors that had competed in the last RFQ for Triple D.
So I understand it wasn't in both of them.
I'm hearing that the same vendors that have spoken tonight asked that it be taken out. Am I hearing that correctly?
Mr. O'Leary, you want to dress up?
Yeah, that wasn't information we had gotten from Triple D, that was from the continuing services. So it was feedback we had gotten from our vendors prior to putting out Triple D and Fort Pierce Westwood.
So it was taken out in both of those processes?
Yes, ma'am.
Unfortunately, this is only the third board discussion. Any other questions?
Just in regards to some of the things some of the speakers said, I agree with a couple of things that were said tonight, and eloquently or not. In another life, I was part of many RFPs and RFQs, and up and down, much more money than what we have today, and smaller ones. Some of the smaller ones were even more debatable. I agree with a couple of speakers said that the process may need to have some changes. I'm not going to go into which ones, I'm not going to negotiate that in public. I think we're going to do that in an upcoming board meeting that we're going to have a workshop. And the other boards that I was on, the process was a little different than the process we have. However, this is the process we have now. This is the one. This is the one we go by. And having heard Dr. Prince, because I had to hear what he had to say in the beginning because I had some questions, he answered them all. Going by what Dr. Prince said, I feel that the process was followed. It was done fairly the way it was supposed to be done with the process that we have now, whether it's flawed or not. It is the process that I have to follow now and go by the rules, and that's what I'm doing. So the process may have to be changed, and it may not be changed, but until then, this is what I have to go by. So that's why I am supporting item 8A, and I go, I believe what Dr. Prince had to say to me.
Mrs. Richardson?
I don't think that anybody is disputing whether or not the process was followed. I believe the process was followed. The issue is that there was some issues with the process. It's about the process, you know, in my mind's eye. So it's not the process or the, how it was, it was, the process itself is that there is a problem, and that problem, yes, the horse has gone through the gate. We understand that. Well, it may not have gone through the gate because we have not ratified anything, so it's up to the board to make any changes. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
The board can make any changes that the board wants to make. So it's up to the board. The horse is still in the pen.
Mention one more thing, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I only received, I did not expect this tonight. I only received one phone call about this. Some items receive a dozen. I received the one phone call on the item. Also, Dr. Prince mentioned that at the end of the process, there was a time period, I don't know how long, you didn't mention that, where you could protest, you could actually make your comments and protest what happened. Nobody did. Dr. Prince said that. So that's where I'm going. I'm going that we followed the protest, the process, flawed or not, we followed the process, you just said that, and maybe it's going to get changed. But that's the process I have now. I got one phone call, didn't expect this tonight, and nobody argued the original, did they, Dr. Prince? Am I hearing you properly? Nobody contested when we made the announcement.
All the firms had 72 hours to protest, and it was, the intent to award was on December 2nd, none did.
And the last thing I'm going to say, Mr. Chair, is that we've held this school up long enough. This school's already gotten held up, and we need to replace this school, and I want to see it move forward. We followed the process.
I'm actually totally in agreement with Westwood being built. Westwood needs to be built.
Is that all the discussion?
Well, I want to say that again, and I'm speaking for myself, in that I don't believe the process... that, I believe the process did what it was supposed to do. What I don't like is the fact that this equity distribution was taken out. And I want to know more about this. I know that we are on a timeline, but I am leaning toward wanting us to discuss this further, even if we need to meet in between times to have a more thorough discussion. I don't, you know, being of African-American descent, I'm very sensitive to equity distribution, to equality and fairness in the process. And I'm still stuck on why would it be taken out? And I've been told that there were other construction companies and businesses that asked for it to be taken out. I want to find out if this, I want to find out more about this. So, I personally would like to recommend, and I'm going to wait till you have a motion, I suppose, or make the motion. Or can I make the motion now?
Dr. Mills, there's already a motion on the floor. It was motioned by Ms. Holly, second by Mr. Kelly, and now we're just having discussion.
And then we're going to do our vote?
And then we're going to do our vote for accepting the superintendent's recommendation on...
All right. Well, I'm clear on wanting to table this until we, I find out some more information on this. As Mr. Kelly said, I didn't start getting calls until this week, or last week was when I got the call. So, I'm also, I also don't like the idea that these companies were given 72 hours to protest and no one showed, no one protested within the 72 hours. So, I lean toward that being a problem as well, because the process, part of that process was that if you had a problem, you should have brought it up within the time limit of the process. So, I'm back and forth with this in my thinking. I want to make sure that equality is done and that we give that, we give all of our construction companies that opportunity, those that that can do the work equally. I mean, I'm not asking that we down or water down the people that we have build our buildings, but if they are equal in being able to build our schools, I think that we should be more open than to just have one company do both schools. So, I know that the process was done according to what is set in place, but I don't like the idea that something that was part of the process was taken out. Why would we take that out? That is so serious that we make sure that there's equity distribution. Why in the world would they ask that to be taken out? I have a problem with that. So, I would like to table it till I can get more clarity on some of the things that took place.
As the parliamentarian, if I can just interject about how that would happen. So, if you want to table an item, you can make a motion to table. It does require a second, it's non-debatable. So, you would say, for example, I make a motion to table this item until the next meeting, for example. And like I said, then that would require a second, or it would die, and it's not debatable, and then you would vote on it. Thanks.
And so, with that being said, I do make a motion that we table it until the next meeting.
Second.
All right, we got a second. Do we have, does it have a discussion on this? Any discussion?
You don't discuss this, you just vote on it.
Those for tabling, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay.
Mr. Chair, could I ask you to call a question on the first motion? If this one's done?
That one died. No, not yet. Is there any more discussion? All right, I'm just going to go ahead and, and Mr. Kelly, if we would have called the vote, I wouldn't have an opportunity to speak.
I understand.
No sir, I appreciate. I just want to say, every company does a phenomenal job in St. Lucie County. Every one of these businesses uses local people, and we're grateful for that. Keeping the people, keeping our, our community employed, using OCI, using, interpreting, using the same plumbers and electricians in the community as best as we can. Same thing with using the interior, Atlantic and everybody else, and the same painters, Chivas and through the gamut. Florida, mechanical, Siemens. I know you guys produce a phenomenal product. Everybody here, I've been in the construction business too. I understand the process. There has been some flaws in this process. The point system changed. It went from zero to five to one to 10. I looked at the, I looked at the stuff. I noticed the state statute was not in it. I know it was in the continuing, in the continuing continuing RFPs, and it's not in the other ones. But that was all addressed in the process. Going back to the review committee, and I want to make sure that this is on record. I know that the gentleman from Proctor talked about the same committee. We did have a different committee, but we still had the same three or four people. Because I don't want the people thinking, oh, we had a different committee. Because when I watched the videos, and I watched everybody's videos, and I watched them a couple of times. You know, Mr. McSweeney head of facilities was there, Kim Albretton from purchasing was there, Mr. O'Leary, and I think I had another project manager. But, and I know there's a couple, I'm just doing this off the top of my head, because I didn't know that was a question. But I know that from the first committee, that there was three extra people there that weren't on there. I know Mr. Sanders, and was Mr. Rodrick, wasn't there? Please, we need to get this on record so people can hear.
We had one change, we brought our CFO onto there because of the process. So, we brought on Michelle Thomas, our CFO, to the second RFP for Westwood.
Okay. So, I understand what was being said. And like I said, I've watched the videos, and I've sat and watched the scoring too. The process was followed, it was documented. We have spoken to our attorneys, a couple of them, just to make sure that we are in in transparency. I received four to five phone calls from Jaclyn. I received three to four phone calls from Wharton. I spoke to Remnant once. So, those were the construction people that I talked to and listened to to what they had to present. And I did a lot of it in December, and then recently some of it in January. So, it was important that I heard from each construction group, and I also heard from Ms. Dampier and from a few others. And appreciate you calling, Ms. Dampier, letting me know what the community is saying and what other people are saying. So, I feel like we have been available to hear what is going on. So, again, I feel the process was followed. I appreciate Remnant and what they do in this community in core, and thankful for their desire to build this building. But I'm just going to go ahead and stick with the superintendent's recommendation. At this point, I will go ahead and call, before I do that, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote. Those in favor of the superintendent's recommendation? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries 3-2. Mr. Superintendent, moving on, can we have your report, please?
Yes, thank you. So, a couple of things, whenever folks walked in tonight, there was a flyer that was there with regards to MLK, Martin Luther King, the commemoration celebration on the opening evening, January 6th at IRSC. I was there, I thought it was a great event. That provides basically a calendar of all the events we have scheduled or throughout the community for Martin Luther King. And that's this ongoing celebration of his legacy. I also wanted to say Happy New Year, I hope everybody had a great holiday. You know, I can tell you, it was very eventful for me and my family. My wife is here tonight, is one of the only board, welcome Heather. Welcome to a board meeting. So, anyway, I owe you dinner, so it's good to see you here. But also, I wanted to recognize the students at Morningside Elementary, and it's always, you know, and I know it was a little bit of a tense meeting tonight with regards to, you know, the folks and expressing their displeasure about various things, but really, it's about the kids and the education that our kids receive as part of their public school. So, it was great to see Morningside there. Before I move on, I also want to recognize and congratulate Ginger Brantley. Ginger, can you come forward and just say a couple of words to us? Ginger is our new Director of Risk Management.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, Board Members, and Superintendent Prince. It is an honor to be chosen as the Director of Risk Management and Employee Benefits. I've worked with the Risk Management Department for almost 22 years, and I look forward to many more. I'm so fortunate to have a wonderful staff, an incredibly supportive family, and two beautiful children. Emily, who is 19 and graduated from Lincoln Park last year, and Alexander, who's in first grade at Northport K8 this year. They keep me motivated and moving forward every single day. My predecessor, Susan Carver, was a wonderful mentor and taught me everything I know about risk management. Even though I miss her greatly, she has prepared me well for this new role. Thank you, thank you all for this wonderful opportunity, and I look forward to a very bright and productive future. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ginger, I can tell you, you have earned it, you have the respect of staff, our district office, our employees, so thank you and congratulations. I also wanted to recognize a few of our board members, Chairperson Ingersoll, our Vice Chair Debbie Hawley, and Mrs. Jennifer Richardson for attending our winter graduation today. We had 50, a little over 50 students that crossed that threshold and earned a graduation in the middle of the year, and many of these students, they're graduating a little late, but through perseverance, they finished, and I just want to congratulate them. And it says so much whenever we have the district leadership showing up at those events. And literally, we had 34 kids who actually participated in the ceremony today. So, it was a truly a happy event, and I was just so proud of those young men and women for finishing. I also want to recognize a couple of the board members, Chairperson Ingersoll and Vice Chair Hawley for attending the Acceleration Academy Ribbon Cutting. And that is a program that we partner with that really helps re-engage students. Kids that have dropped out of school, that they actually, we find them wherever they are, and we reach out to them, and we try to re-engage these kids in school. And today, Acceleration Academy had 42 graduates that previously would have never graduated from our public schools, that were working or sitting at home or doing whatever in our communities, but not going to school and not finishing. And it's our commitment, even if you don't graduate in four years, that we're not going to disenfranchise our kids, that we're going to reach out, recapture, and try to get them across the finish line. Want to mention a couple of upcoming events, because Mrs. Martin asked me to mention them. The STEM Fair is Friday, January 13th at 9:00 a.m. until 12:00. That's at the Kite Center at IRSC. I'm looking forward also Monday, we have our Martin Luther King Parade on January 16th, that is Monday, and that starts at 10:00 a.m. And then lastly, we have our Commissioners Academic Challenge Friday, January 27th at 9:00 a.m. With that being said, Happy New Year, and I look forward to working with the board in 2023. Thank you.
Yep, I get paid for this. Go ahead, Ms. Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Chair Ingersoll, members of the board and superintendent. I do not have any attorney's report for you tonight.
School members report, I'm going to start with Dr. Mills first.
I just want to remind everyone that we are in the St. Lucie County Dr. Martin Luther King's Week. And the theme is "The Power of Unity: Embracing the Imagination of the New Generation." And there are many events that are taking place this week. Many have already take, have already last week happened. But I want to, for the community that may not have a agenda of the different events, I just got mine this evening. So, I missed a couple of events not knowing when or where they were. So, for that reason, I would like to announce some of these events. MLK NAACP Ceremony will be at the Friendship Missionary Baptist Church here in Fort Pierce. And that will be from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. That's this Saturday, January the 14th. And then also, this Saturday on the 14th, there is a, I'm sorry, January the 9th, the Martin Luther King NAACP Ceremony has already passed. That was this evening. No, that was yesterday, January the 9th. So, cross that out, but if you have your pen and paper, write these down. Saturday morning, January the 14th, will be the Awards Breakfast. And that will take place at the Treasure Coast Public Safety Training Complex on Kirby Loop Road in Fort Pierce. That's going to be from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. So, if you want to take place in the Award Breakfast from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. on January the 4th. And then Saturday, also, January the 14th, after the breakfast, in the afternoon at 1:00, from 1:00 to 2:00, there will be the Reef Laying Ceremony. And that will take place at Dreamland Park. Now, we're asking the community to come out, and let's all represent at least one of these events that will take place this week. And that is, that will be on South, Dreamland Park is on South 25th Street and Atlantic Avenue in Fort Pierce. Again, that Reef Laying Ceremony will start at 1:00. And then also, there will be a Blood Drive on the 14th, and that will be at Dreamland Park as well. And that will take place in the morning from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. On Monday, January the 16th, that will be the Grand Parade. Many times, we can't get out to these other events, but I think most of us can make it to the Grand Parade. So, Monday, January the 16th, this Monday coming, the Grand Parade. And it will be, it will start at Avenue I and Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. And then after the parade will be park festivities directly after the parade, and that will be at Incubate Neighborhood Center on North 13th Street. So, please, if you did not get this information that I just gave, there is a phone number that you can call. And that number is 672-9871. 672-9871. They can give you exactly what I just gave you this evening. And the other number is 353-7808. And that's the end of my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Hawley? Thank you, Ms. Hawley. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I just want to mention that I really enjoyed Morningside Grammar School today. That was a great way to start a meeting. Also, I have briefly, Superintendent, I have two checks here from the Port St. Lucie Downtown Lions Club. They were gifts for two people that should have been given on their first semester, but due to unfortunate circumstances, they got held up. They're both for $1,000 each for Larica Cherry and for Alexa Tango. And I talked to Tom Jones today, the checks are here with their student ID numbers. And Tom Jones is going to mail them through the Education Foundation for us. A little bit late on them, but I just wanted to mention their names. I think they're Fort Pierce Central graduates, both of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Mrs. Richardson? Mrs. Richardson?
I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed the graduation ceremony today. It was wonderful to see our children walk across the state, our students. I think it was Dr. Prince that said in his statement, it may have been, that this is, was the beginning of the rest of their lives, you know, and that really, that ministered to me, this was such, I think it's an awesome day, when you walk across, you graduate, you get your certificate, and you have the rest of your life. So I really enjoyed that today, and congratulations to all of our graduates.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. Just want to make sure people know that Anything Goes is the play in Port St. Lucie High School coming up towards the end of the month and the beginning of February. The tickets are selling out, they're at Perkins, Honey Baked Ham, and that's all I remember at this point. But they are selling out, so you want to get them quickly as possible if you'd like to see. And it's the funniest thing, you tell people for like a month in advance, and then the thing comes around two weeks before they sell out, and everybody wants tickets, and it's just like, no. Then they're like, well, can I get an extra one? No, there only seats so many people. So please get your tickets. It was a great day today. Thank you, Morningside, again. So we're gonna go ahead and move into our scheduled speakers. Ms. Susan, please. You're on top. Same time, though.
Good evening, board, Dr. Prince, Susan Sedino, Port St. Lucie, I think you know me by now. I have to say that I, we met with Ms. Richardson on the last week, and Dale asked me if I had anything to speak about, and I said, no. And 2:00 in the morning, I woke up and something was in my ear, and got up and wrote this down. "I wish I could stop the violence in the world and everyone could just get along, but I can't. I wish I could find every homeless person living on the streets a place to live, but I can't. I wish I could find every child in foster care or adoption centers a forever home, but I can't. I wish I could stop the trafficking of fentanyl that's coming across our borders and killing our young people, but I can't. Every month for over a year, I've been coming to these meetings. Sometimes I speak, sometimes not, trying to get the school board to remove the pornographic books from the school libraries, but I can't. Why? Why do I keep trying? Why do I keep trying to get parents involved and begging them to come to the meetings and stand up for their children? Why do I care? Why don't I just stop? I can't. Romans 2:12 says, 'Rejoice in hope, be patient in tribulation, and be constant in prayer.' The school board has recommended an opt-in or opt-out by parents as a compromise, so the books don't have to be removed, that way no one person or group is offended. The fact that it's proven that pornography harms a child's brain, their view of sex, of people, their quality of life, and causes them to harm other children is irrelevant. You can read more on this topic on protectyoungeyes.com. I would like to make a recommendation to the school board on how the opt-in or opt-out could be a compromise for everyone. You intitute the policy, but you also add these books to the library with the pornographic books. Jesus Loves Me, The Real Story of Christmas, Jesus and the Lion's Den, How Can I Pray, God Made Us, Courageous and Bold Bible Heroes, and finally, The Holy Bible. If we can allow pornographic books in our schools, then we should also allow God back in our schools. Let the parents opt-in or opt-out whether they want their children to read these books too." That's all I have to say.
Mrs. Galliano?
I can't do anything about it either. So we found out through these past over a year here. I'm gonna start off with Romans 12, 7 and 8. "If your gift is serving others, serve them well. If you are a teacher, teach well. If your gift is to encourage others, be encouraging. If it is giving, give generously. If God has given you leadership ability, take that responsibility seriously. And if you have a gift for showing kindness to others, do it gladly." We also have the 2 Corinthians is, "For all of us must appear before Christ to be judged by him. We will each receive what we deserve according to everything we have done, good or bad, in our body of life." I've been saying those for a long, long time. We have, at last count, 37,600 students in St. Lucie County, and we're talking about 161 books. That is less than one-half of 1% of the, for the kids, of 161 books. The body of, that's 0.43% of the student body. So we're dealing with like these, for them to even have it is sort of like redundant. We have right now, a third to a half teen, a half of the teens in this country, between 13 and 19, engage in self-injury, that behavior of burning or cutting themselves. It's the most common non-suicidal self-injury, yet 70% of teens engaging in self-injury have at least tried to commit suicide once. Does it have to do with the books? I don't know, but neither do you. But when we're dealing with men, with the main brain cells of these young, young children, and how they think, and how they comprehend, and how they do things, it's very important that we have to be able to look into these things. Things like one of the books, Real Live Boyfriends. You've had to read it. There's one book in all of the school board, and it goes to the Treasure Coast High School, where there's 200, 2,000, pardon me, 2,763 students there in its one book. Get rid of it. It is also, part of the reason is, is the book is, puts, I'm trying to say this nicely, it is saying that they are, the characters are preferring animals over humans for sexual behavior. We have Beloved, there's nine books in six schools, dealing with 23,846 students. This is by Beloved, this is by Toni Morrison, and it deals with bestiality and battery of human beings. I don't think we should have that. Killing Mr. Griffin, this is the fun one. It is the how-to to kidnap a tough teacher by high school students, and how to kidnap him and kill him. This is in five schools. We have seven of those books, and it's available to 19,997 students. 13 Reasons Why, this is the scary one. This is 23 books within five schools, 16,974 kids can get a hold of this, and it gives a step-by-step instructions on how to commit suicide. Isn't that precious? I could go on. There's many that have been banned for CRT throughout the nation and throughout this state. There's all sorts of craziness. The kite runner, I've been told it's not bad, and it can be part of their entrance into college. Well, I've called five colleges, and all they care about is that the kids can actually read. This is where we have come to this at this point. The kite runner is now in 20 schools and has 44 are in, oh, I stand corrected, sorry, I'm reading the wrong line. There's 10 of the books, they're in six schools, and the main thing about that, it has been banned in Orange County since 2021, but it has also been through the American Library, it has continued to be...
30 seconds remain.
It's been continually challenged throughout the country. You're reading the books, I'll be at the workshop. I am hoping that you will all descend from making sure that you will say no to all of these books, and we can do the well-being for all of our children on all situations, and not have to worry about if there is a danger, and if there is a tragedy, that it wasn't because of one of these books. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Galliano. I don't have any more speaker for us, but I do want to say something. I, I should have said something. I'm looking over and seeing Dr. Booker right now. At St. Lucie Acceleration Academy today, as Dr. Prince says, this is an organization that helps students pass the threshold of graduation. They go out and really focus on them, and they've become a pretty successful company within the last 10, they started out 10 years ago, and they're pretty successful in multiple states. And they didn't have to say this, but they spoke very, very highly of Dr. Booker and her work, not only just the work within the organization, but how she cares for kids individually, making sure that they cross the finish line. And I wouldn't be a good board member if I didn't say, Ms. Booker, thank you, because nationally, you have put us on the map, so I appreciate your efforts there. And I should have said something this morning, but thank you. All right, at this point, our meeting is now concluded. Thank you so much.